I thought to order the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of Aransas Pass, June 4, 2018 at 6:00 p.m. Let's rise for the invocation and pledge.
Dear Father, we thank you for this wonderful day. We thank you for the blessings that you bestowed upon us. We thank you for the country in which we live in, my Father. Thank you for the liberties that we enjoy. We know that they were not for ye, Lord. I pray, Lord, that you give us the guidance as far as the City Council to move the City of Aransas Pass forward. And again, I pray, my Father, that you equip us with the knowledge and the sense of direction that we need to take. This we ask in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Our pledge of allegiance to the Father, to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now we go to the consent agenda. All of the following items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of this item unless the council members will request. If discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately.
I make the motion we approve the consent agenda.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we go to public hearing. On public comments on proposed FY 2018-2019 operating budget.
The reason that's on there is simply that first year we'll be trying public hearing at the beginning of the budget process as well as the mandated at the end of the budget process. It's just simply an opportunity for citizens if they have ideas and suggestions as we enter the budget phase, they're going to come up at this time if you agree and let us know what their thinking is for the upcoming budget, which we are just now in. Again, this is the first of two public hearings.
Okay.
This is all we have, no one. But there's another opportunity as well as throughout the process for public people to speak, but there's another public hearing at the end of the budget process.
I'm Ricky Kilgore, retired fire chief from here in Ranch Pass. I'm here to talk about the fire department, basically. They're needing more personnel and more equipment. We've got more businesses coming in, more industry coming in. They're going to have to have more manpower and more equipment to be able to do the job like we should be doing. With all these residences coming up, and I see a lot of them building right now, manpower just, we're low, and we need to come up with manpower and the equipment. We've got a new truck out there, which is great, and we need some more equipment for these guys to do the job, our job, better than anybody in the state of Texas. That's the way I look at it. We are a good department, we're one of the best ones in South Texas, and I'd like to see that keep going as far as we could go with it. So, that's, we do need more equipment and more personnel. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I say something? Well, I'm kind of impressed of the City of Aransas Pass because we actually have a hired fire department, unlike Ingleside and Rockport, that they have volunteer fire department and not a natural paid fire department, so.
And Mr. Mayor, I'd like to remind the Council that on the 15th, you'll be hearing the priorities from the different departments and then setting priorities for yourself. That's coming up in just a few days, in, just a few days from now.
Thank you.
Adios.
Mayor Gomez, City Council, ladies and gentlemen, I feel the same way that Mr. Kilgore is speaking as far as the fire department. As you all know, that this town is expanding a little bit and growing, and now we have these three and four-story buildings that are around us. Got a couple over here going out of town on Highway 35. You've got some over here on, going out to Port Aransas, and then the neighboring city of Ingleside also has three or four-story apartments. And I do think that they do need a special type of equipment for that. And I'm talking about a ladder truck, which will reach all the way up to the top. Because, you know, things do happen, even though these are new buildings, you never know when you might need it as an emergency. And I sure hate to see that recurrence of 9/11 again, where people are having to jump down to their death. And if this type of equipment saves one person, it'll be worth it a whole lot. You're not just going to serve Aransas Pass, you're going to serve the surrounding towns also. So, to me, that's a very important type of equipment that the fire department should have. And like he said, also, the personnel, they're going to be short because, you know, like I said, you know, they're expanding and they have to do more calls. And right now, if one of them gets sick, well, that's going to be, they're going to be short one man. And what they have right now to respond to a fire adequately, you know, they need that personnel there. I know because I used to belong to the fire department a long time ago, volunteer fire department, and it is very important. The second thing that I would like to discuss is pertaining to our VFW post 2932, which is right across the road, that's John Weibel post. That post was made in 1934 from the World War I veterans. It's a historical building, and it needs to be refurbished bad. We've got a little bit of support from the Veterans of Foreign Wars founding, foundation, but that money runs down pretty fast. You know, everything is so expensive, we're lacking on funds to get it up to par. Where everybody here in Aransas Pass will be proud of seeing that building, you know, and we could use it as, like we always have, for community services. Anybody that needs a hall or anything, we'll extend our welcome there to anybody. As far as the helicopter's concerned, we've got that going. We're going to have a meeting this Wednesday, and we got point of contacts in our membership that are going to get a hold of the place. It's in Illinois where is the, they have the mothball yard of all kinds of aircraft from the military. So, it's a matter of just getting word across them, and that's part of the reason that we're going to need a little bit of funding to transport that helicopter back this way.
Did you hand me that sign? I want to show you a banner or a sign that we plan, we plan to have it, the mural painted on this wall over here. We're already covering up the windows, and as y'all can see, if you want to press it around, it's going to have to be real nice, you know. People come down here for, you know, vacation and tourists, when they drive by there, they're going to, they're going to see that, and they're going to be, you know, proud to see that, that we have that painting on there. It's the land of the free because of the brave. So, we're probably going to get the art teacher from the high school, Mr. Scott, I believe is his name, and see if he can do it next year for us as a school project. So, hopefully, everything will turn out with that. That's all I have to say. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
My name is Carol Salinas. I live in Aransas Pass. And I, you know, I guess I'll just comment on what they were saying. The fire department is very important. When I was thinking, planning on moving to this area, that's one of the things I looked at. We had a paid, you had, at that time, a paid fire department. That was important to me. We need to keep that up. We've got a good reputation here. The police department also, and I'm not talking just about our personal safety, our public safety, people coming in, look at those things. I did. You know, what's the police department like? And it has so much improved from when I was researching this area and the fire department. So, I would say, all departments are important. Everyone thinks they need to get their share of the pie, but those are two important, it's not just public safety, but for increasing our residential base also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Adios. Let's go to the city manager.
Mr. Mayor and Council, first item is an issue with the, the Aransas Pass youth. They're requesting use of the pool, no charge, for the summer camp 2018 program, and they want to use the pool on a Tuesday, on Tuesdays during the months of June and July. That would begin on the 19th of June and extend to the 24th of July, and the time is from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. Again, this is, this request is for a, at no cost. You've done this in the past. Want to point out, however, that the city does lose a substantial amount of money with this particular approach, and we would be remiss if we didn't point that out. We are in the red as it goes at the pool by a substantial amount of money. This adds to that. Just wanted to ask that you keep that in mind as you consider this particular proposed legislation. So, this is a request that's similar, that you're familiar with, free of charge for those days for the Aransas Pass for youth. That's the request before you.
Well, me personally, I wouldn't mind them using it. I think it's well worth the money for, for the program that we have for AP for youth. It gives them something to do, somewhere to go throughout the summer instead of hanging out in the streets. I think it's money well worth spent, but that's my opinion.
Something else to consider is that there are some alternatives. You could have a discounted rate, a smaller rate than just the free. You could reduce the amount of days. And something else to keep in mind, that's normally a day, that particular Tuesday is a day that staff uses for training, et cetera. So, that's something else to keep in mind. But there are some alternatives, is all I'm saying, to consider if you so desire.
I thought last year, we talked about this, and we talked about them trying to go out throughout the year and find sponsors for these, because it was a burden on the city.
My understanding is that is correct from what I, what I've been told, anyway.
We gave it to them last year, and we just asked them to please do that, because especially this year, we don't have the money in the budget for it.
It is. Yeah, that is, you're correct.
I'm certainly for letting the camp use the pool. I just think it's just, at this point, be fiscally unresponsible for us to let them use it completely free at this time. I think a reduced rate at this time would be good.
Sarah, could I ask you a question?
Yes.
On this one, I know that you say Tuesday is the day that they normally, the staff has it for cleaning or training.
Yes.
Would there be another day that would work, for instance, in the morning, rather than them just going on a Tuesday? Possibly do like the class Wednesday, Thursday? I don't know, I'm just.
And Vicki might be able to help me out when answering this question, but it used to be on Tuesdays and Thursdays, so we decided to close the pool on Tuesday. So, like tomorrow, we're closed, but we kind of opened for them because it was a little bit easier on our staff, just because we were closed on that day, and to have, you know, that amount of swimmers in, in addition to being open to the public, it kind of got chaotic when we were trying to rein it in. So, you know, I would think that, because it's 100 swimmers.
What is the actual cost, though? What is the actual cost that we're actually spending on?
Can you put them in?
Oh, yeah.
So, having it on Tuesday, it's not going to be a problem?
No, we can accommodate, we're going to, we can accommodate.
Okay.
Tuesdays, we can accommodate, Mondays or Wednesdays.
Well, I'm just.
We're going to accommodate what your wishes are, for sure.
Because I'm thinking Monday, Wednesdays were, independent with the public coming in and paying full price.
It's a day that the actual pool is closed.
But we've also had them there when the pool's been open to the public. We've had both groups, we've had their group, and we've been open to the public at the same time, historically. We've done it both ways. So, you're asking like what our preference is? None, really, I mean, you know, Tuesdays or Mondays or?
And what would, oh, the reduced rate would be $3 a child versus five?
Yes.
Is the same child going twice a week, or one group goes one day and one?
No, it's only one, it used to be twice a week, then we cut it back to once a week, and now we're going to cut it all the way back out, or charge them a fee, pretty much.
Well, I make a motion that we go by the, what staff recommended, the reduced rate of $3 per swimmer on a Tuesday.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose.
Mr. Mayor and Council, the next item is Consider an Act on Approval to Apply for an EDA grant. This is, this grant, if approved, would be, would pave all of the roads out at Conbound Harbor with an adjacent bike path. We're working on the grant right now. A&amp;M University is working with us as far as the preparation of this grant. This is something I have mentioned in the past, but to formalize, we would need your approval to actually go out for the grant, which we are in the process of putting together right now, just requesting your approval to move forward.
I have a question on this. Is there a timeframe on this? Because we're, as we're looking at developers for the harbor, could we do this at the end of their, you know, at a certain point in their development? Or is this their timeframe to do? Because I sure would hate to have new roads and then be torn up.
We, we have flexibility as far as, and we've not set those timelines yet. But it doesn't have to be this particular month or these particular couple of months. We have more flexibility on when the construction actually occurs. There is a timeline. It has to be finished by a certain year. We have, it's two to three years, and I've forgotten. Two to three years to get it completed, and any time during that period.
Okay. Will I make a motion that we apply for the Economic Development Administration grant for Conbound Harbor?
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Mr. Mayor and Council, next item is Consider an Act on Designating an Elected Official to Serve on the Budget Review Committee. We have talked about this before, but we have not brought this to you. We're setting up, we're taking a different approach on the budget this year, and all department heads, after we go through that meeting on the 15th of June, where you agree on the priorities after hearing presentations from the department heads, the next step in the process will be one-on-ones with the committee we're talking about, be made up of the finance director, myself, and one elected official. And we will have a full week, all day, hearing from all the department heads. So, it has to be someone whose schedule would permit that consumption of time. There's a lot of time that'll be contributed to this. And that, that committee work is going to be very important as far as going through every line in the budget, every line, even the small items as well as the large items. And again, it's important, I believe, anyway, to have an elected official on that committee, because you folks have to approve the final budget. So, having that liaison, so to speak, to the elected officials from the working process would be very helpful. So, need someone, if you agree, to, to be appointed as the, the elected official to serve on that three-person committee, and it's a full week, eight hours a day.
We are very lucky to have somebody in finance on the council.
Vicki says she'll do it.
Thank you very much. Looking forward to it, and it's tough work, but it is kind of fun. Really get a feel for the city in this, in depth, so. The next item, as we go down the list, I'm sorry, Consider an Act on Approving the Automatic Increase in Garbage Services Stated in the Contract with Absolute Waste Services. Let me pull up that agenda, sorry.
Gary? Question?
Yeah.
We need to consider an act on the elected official.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, well, I make a motion we appoint Nikki Abrego to serve on the Budget Review Committee.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
He was supposed to say aye. He was supposed to say aye.
Next item is something that is in the contract, and that's allowing for a CPI increase. And the increase is, comes out to 43 cents for residential. And the commercial will depend on how many, how many days and the size of the container and that sort of thing. Normally, this has been a pass-through. Otherwise, it's something we have to absorb, but that's in the contract. The CPI increase is in the contract. So it's coming to you to see if you agree to that 43 cent increase for this particular city service. And anything to add to that, Sandra?
No, it's just to see, to see if we're going to do it as a pass-through to the customer or not. If we're still going to have the increase from absolute.
What would it be on a residential?
Forty-three cents.
That would be the normal fee to, I'm trying to think if it's here. What do they pay right now? I'm trying to see here.
Who are we paying people?
They pay 24.33 plus tax, 26.34.
26.34 and it's going to go to 26.77.
It'll be just a 43 cents a month increase with the tax included. Forty cents the actual cost, but 3 cents of tax.
Just, I know it's...
I know, I know.
I know, but it's, I know, but I know we can't afford to absorb it.
The thing is that if we absorb it, we're looking at about maybe $30,000. Just to absorb this in our budget. And that's, I know, I know you're very conscious about the price increase and stuff like that, and I'm with you on that. But this is something that we did agree when we entered into contract with them. And so...
So we're going to get you dumpsters on this one? I'm just kidding.
Bill is back there. That sounds like a Bill question. Could we talk to Bill about getting some free dumpsters for cleanup? Or extra trash pickups for all these people that are throwing everything on the side of the roads?
Ask for 43 cents.
Yeah, well, that's what I said.
Mayor, Council, staff, residents, thank you for, thank you.
They're putting you on the spot, right?
Yeah. Well, we actually just did a cleanup with four city dumpsters. And the Chamber of Commerce asked for two dumpsters, so we did that in kind. So that was free. So we'll look at doing that. I've heard, read a great article by the city manager in a newspaper about the city. There's a lot of things that residents can do to clean up the city. But there's things we can do to help. And we're certainly in a position to help, and we're willing to do so. So, you know, vacant lots are going to continue to be an issue in the city. Construction material is going to be an issue. You heard, there's a lot of construction going on, as we all know. Whatever we can do to help along those lines, we'll continue to be willing to do that. So you can continually put me on the spot.
Okay.
So would the answer is yes, we're going to have free dumpsters?
I don't think we need free dumpsters. I think what we need is a pass-through on every street to pick up. And like I said, I had this brain whatever on the way here with all the trash going, thinking like, you can put a door hanger on somebody's, am I right? You can put a door hanger on somebody's door legally as long as it's not a, and let them know, your street is picked up today. Don't throw any more trash out there because we're not going to do it somehow or other, we're going to have to stop it. Because the piles just keep getting bigger. Yes, every day. You go by and the pile that is this big, is this big and this high and this big. So that's what we need help with.
We need the residents to keep their eyes open and reporting these individuals.
Well, I move that we approve the automatic increase in...
You have a gentleman that wanted to speak.
You want to come up to the podium?
The trash pickup, is it supposed to be once a month?
Yeah, but you got to say your name and address first.
My name is Dave Miller. 234 South 10th Street, right over here. You know, we're still picking up from the hurricane, my wife and I. We waited three months to have our trash picked up on the side of the road. We had to call and still had to wait another month for that to happen. But I thought it was supposed to be once a month on a certain week that they would pick that up. I'm just going to get this straight because, you know, we're going to be charged more for it. But I don't feel like the service, they're not doing their part to do it, to pick up the trash. So that's, just wanted to make that.
I move to approve the automatic increase in the garbage services as stated in the previous contract with absolute waste.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Last item I have, Mr. Mayor, is the city is in, I don't want to use the word desperate, but coming pretty close, need of an update of the Personnel Manual. It's been many years. And Personnel Manuels have become outdated fairly quickly these days with new laws that are coming out on a regular basis. The recommendation is to go with this particular firm and who has a person who specializes in this particular issue. And the price tag, frankly, I was expecting a much higher price tag for this. But it's something that staff is recommending that you agree to move forward with to update our policy and bring it in compliance with federal, state personnel laws. And so we can update something that we desperately need to update.
When was the last time we updated or?
I have absolutely no idea how long it's been. There has been a group that got together, did some excellent work, meaning in-house group. And they made some recommendations. And the people, if you agree to bring them on board, we'll look at that. We'll look at our existing manual and combine the two with the current laws and gel it all together.
Is this something that possibly can be, rather, because I know when you have a printed copy, it costs so much to always, when you're having to update with new laws, is there something that can be online to employees?
Normally, it is online.
The one that we have now is too?
I can't answer that. But it's so outdated, it probably is not a good idea to have it online, quite frankly.
You know, just making sure so that where they...
Normally... Normally, it is. It's online and we, with an updated one, one we feel more comfortable with. I anticipate it will be online.
Good, okay.
Favor of the council?
Well, I make a motion that we approve the city manager going out to update our city personnel's policy manual with, I'm looking for the name of the company, where is this? Denton Navarro and Rocha of Harlingen, Texas, not to exceed $6,000.
That's right.
And I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, that's all that I have.
Okay, now we go to Development Services. It's Consider an Act on the Reassurance of Request for Proposal for Softball Field.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Two weeks ago, we advertised for the use of the softball fields as we do every year. We had some inquiries, but no one actually submitted for bids this year. So we're coming to y'all to see if y'all want to have us re-advertise another two weeks or just consider it this year not usable. We still have some work to be done out there after the hurricane. We got dirt to put in, the fencing's been completed. The lights are in, but they haven't been put up yet. So we still got about a month and a half to two of work left out there. So we come to y'all, see if y'all would like for us to go ahead and re-advertise, see if this second round, we get bids in for youth or we just wait for this year.
Repair first and then advertise?
The season, the lease usually runs from...
Repair them first and then advertisement or just advertise them as is?
Well, if we advertise around two weeks and then by the time it comes to council, it'll be about a month before it gets awarded. And that would give us time to actually do the work in between anyways. So it'd be kind of coincide with...
Gary, when's our next workshop?
The next workshop is the second Monday in July, and we're already scheduling things for that. So that would be a possibility, yes.
If it was up to me, I would like to table this and maybe think about maybe some alternative uses for that area.
Is this, just a question, is this something that's going to be covered by FEMA or?
Yes, the light repairs, bleachers, fencing, all that's being covered through FEMA. We've done a lot of work in-house with the fencing and the light poles have been replaced. The lights are in, they just haven't been, we need to get a bid to put them up. And then the dirt, the county is gracious enough to help us haul it in for us. We pay for the dirt and then bring it in, and then we spread it out. But we haven't done that until we're ready to lease it because it's pointing to put dirt down now. And then it'll be two months before someone uses it, the grass will go right through it, so.
Do you have a guesstimate out there on, to get the ball field completely 100%
Ready to go?
Needs to be, how much money is the city looking at?
We're looking at about $250,000. And mainly, most of that is for the lights to be installed and new conduit.
But is that with?
That would be through FEMA, yes.
And FEMA will give us the money back on all of it?
Yes, at some point.
It's our share.
10% of that.
10% of 10%.
Am I hearing from the council a work session on this issue? There's been that suggestion.
I like that idea, to table it.
Well, I make a motion that we have...
Just table it?
Table it, yeah, there you go.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, well, I have the second item on the agenda tonight, too. As y'all know, our Shimpere building had some drastic damage with the hurricane. Roof got blown out and we've been in the process of repairing through FEMA monies. Before you have a change order not to exceed $12,000, these items are not covered through FEMA. Chief has been gracious enough to say he's going to fund it through his drug fund money, but we had to bring it to council for approval. This would include a secondary upstairs restroom. It would include epoxy clothing on the floors downstairs. It'd include insulation and all the little fixtures that FEMA would not cover through the storm. The building, if you haven't had a chance to go look at it right now, is coming along really nicely. And it's, it's actually going to be potential to be used for office use since it's going to be air-conditioned as well. So staff recommends approving the change order. And I mentioned before, this will come out of federal drug money.
I make a motion that we approve the change order number one for the Shimpere building for the funds to come out of the drug fund.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Now we go to Public Safety. Consider an Act on Approving a Memorandum of Understanding Between the Aransas Pass Police Department and the Ingleside Police Department for Temporary Emergency Dispatch Services.
Mayor, Council, I don't know if Chief Blanchard brought this up on an earlier date, but we were approached a couple of weeks ago by the interim police chief in Ingleside. They're having a manpower shortage when it comes to their dispatch services. He was expecting to have a lack of manpower for 23 days of this month, where he would not have any type of dispatch services in the evening time. He was down to two dispatchers. And he reached out to us and asked us if we could supplement and, you know, provide the dispatch services for his department on the days that he does have a deficit of manpower. At this point, he did, he was able to scramble up some help. So he's okay at this point, but there might be a time where he says, we need dispatch services for this. We'd like for y'all to give us a blessing to just go in agreement with the City of Ingleside Police Department and provide those services.
I guess that would go both ways, like we get the fence and come help us and just...
It would go, it would go both ways, yes, sir. It's like the, if y'all remember signing the, or giving us permission to sign the animal control thing, it works the same way. If they need help, they'll go over there, so it's a vice versa deal. Okay.
Well, I make a motion we approve the Memorandum of Understanding between the Aransas Pass Police Department and the Ingleside Police Department for Temporary Emergency Dispatch Services.
A second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now we go to City Council for Staff Announcements.
In the case of staff announcements, Mr. Mayor and Council, there are a couple of items. Plus, the city attorney has an item also. Under Strategic Budget Workshop Meeting, we talked about that earlier, and that's the June 15th meeting, very important meeting for the budgetary process. We'll begin your read on what you think the priorities are after hearing presentations from the department head, department heads. The other item is also very important, and that is the Comprehensive Plan Public Meeting. And that's this week over at the Civic Center, I believe. I'm losing track of all these different meetings. But I believe that's at Civic Center. And that starts at 6 o'clock. It's being heavily advertised, trying to do as much as possible. There are flyers as you come in. This is very important in that these meetings, there'll be another one, they, with all the other work associated with the comprehensive plan, and we have an outside firm, which is the way it should be done, helping us with this grant works. And they'll be helping us plan, helping you plan, help citizens plan our future for the next five, 10, 15 years. So this meeting, the one after that, and all the subsequent, all the subsequent work that goes with feeding the information into the comprehensive plan process, very critical to our future. And the public has a chance for input at this meeting and another one coming up. And the city attorney has an item on this.
On the next item, I just want to inform the city council that as your city prosecutor, I will be attending the Texas Municipal Court's Education Center Conference that will be held this June in San Antonio at no cost to the city.
I'd like to hear that.
Okay, now we go to Citizen Comments. Citizen comments are intended for the matters that are not scheduled on the agenda. Please limit your comments on, to three minutes and state your name and address for the record. Be advised that the Texas Open Meeting Act prohibits the city council from responding and discussing your comments. The law authorizes the following. Make a statement of factual information, recite existing policy, advise that this subject may be placed on the agenda for a subsequent meeting.
Carol Salinas, South 11th Street, Aransas Pass. My comment probably should have come under the budget public input. The brush is, the trash on the sides of the road is bad. I was just noticing my, my street is really getting bad. But not only the hurricane debris, but part of it, and I've mentioned this before, a year ago, we've got people who are trimming trees and then dumping the trees on property that is not where they're trimming those trees. I went down yesterday, my street has about three different houses that suddenly overnight have piles of dead brush in front of them. And you can look and you know good and well that the, there are no trees that have been trimmed on that property. So we've got people who are being paid to trim these trees and are dumping it somewhere in the city so that it gets picked up without them having to pay for it. This, I know, is difficult, but if some code enforcement would probably be the one, go by those little flyers on the door. But you can ask the owner, did you have these trees trimmed? Are they from your trees? And find out. But that goes into the budget part. That would be a good thing, somebody to go around and start telling people, clean up or, these are not your trees. Who dumped these trees? Code enforcement is, we've got one person doing the job. He's doing a good job, but we have a bigger-than-ever need for code enforcement in the city after the storm. I think that would be a great place to add an employee in code enforcement to do that. And then also just a concern, I'm wondering, we've got a lot of buildings that have, are going to be destroyed. We know that. The owners have already, they know, they've announced. They don't have roofs, they're molded. And I'm wondering, how long do these people have to do something, demolish these buildings, get them down? I would think this mold that is a health hazard, if you're living in it, is going into our air, our environment. And at some point, I think that it probably should be addressed. I don't know that, I'm just thinking, but we've got lots of buildings, not only, I'm not... not talking just residents, commercial businesses that need to be something done. Thank you.
Okay. Now, I guess we're going to go to executive session, and Mary likes to read.
Okay, I'll read. Okay, following on the executive sessions, pursuant to Section 551.071, City of Aransas Pass versus J.M. Davidson Limited RLI Insurance Company and Naismith Engineering, cause number S-14-6278 CB-C in the 334th Judicial District Court in San Petershaw County, Texas. Section 551.071, tax abatement agreement with Fairfield Inn and Suites by Marriott, 2679 Texas 35 Business, Aransas Pass, Texas. Section 551.071, to consult with city attorney regarding an amendment to lease agreement with Redfish Bay Boat House LLC and review of fee schedule policy for harbor leases in Conbrow Harbor. Section 551.072, deliberations regarding real property related to LWR, and Section 551.072, deliberations regarding real property related to offer of 20 acres, property ID number 14172 with a legal description of Block 213, lots 27 through 30, Burton and Danforth. And the time is 6:45.
We'll be back at some point.